Good evening. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the September meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the Town of Niskuna. My name is Keith Frary. I am the Chair of the Board. Let's call the roll, please.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
Here.
Mr. Dolman?
Here.
Ms. Pacheco?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Chairperson Frary?
Here. I'm assuming everybody had an opportunity to look at the minute, meeting minutes from August 24th. There was one thing on the minutes that I think we should address, and I appreciate the careful review by Mr. Green. Line 79. The motion that was on the table was a motion to deny the variances, which passed 7-0. But line 79, if you look at line 78 and 79, Mr. Antonakowski voted "aye" to deny the variances, but it says on the next line, he voted to grant the variances. So if you can change "grant" to "deny." All right, so that revision is before the Board. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as revised?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been seconded. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Latif? Mr. Dolman?
Abstain.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Chairperson Frary?
Yes. So those minutes are approved. We have four cases on tonight. Just to give you a little information, we're going to call your case. It's going to be read, and we'll ask you to come forward to the podium. There's a microphone there. As you can see, we've also got the streaming online for people to watch and/or participate. I'd ask you to please come to the podium. Make sure you speak into the microphone. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be recorded, so the folks online can hear. I'm going to ask you to give your name, your address, and then tell us a little bit about your request for a variance, the reasons why, and anything you've done to either eliminate, reduce, or mitigate the need for a variance. You're going to hear some questions, I'm sure, by the Board members. We have a criteria that's set by statute for us to follow, certain things we need to review. Some of the questions may sound a little strange, questions about adverse effect on the environment and things like that. Those are specifically geared towards the statute and the items that we need to cover. If you have questions, don't hesitate to ask. We don't want this to be a confusing or cumbersome process. Now, probably most importantly, as you can tell, there is only six of us this, here tonight. There is, this is a board made up of seven members. You need four votes to approve your variance. And even though we don't have a seventh member, you still need four votes. Because of that, when you come up, we will give you the opportunity, if you would rather postpone your your case towards the next meeting, when hopefully we'll have a full Board, you can do that. And I'll make sure that we put that on the record, that you've been given that opportunity. If you'd rather come before a full Board, we can postpone your case to the next meeting, which is... Thank you. October 19th would be the next meeting. So you'll have that opportunity when you come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, I guess a point of order, with respect to the election to decide whether to proceed tonight or to postpone it to the next meeting. Is that an election that has to be made prior to the presentation? Or is that something that can be made after the presentation is made? Or it cannot be made at any time? I guess I'm just a little unclear on that.
I guess that's a good question. Elena, do you have a way in on that?
I don't think that there was a hard set rule as to that. I don't know historically what the Board has done. Do you know the answer to that?
Mr. Chairman, I'd submit that we have offered, just kind of off the cuff, like, hey, if you want to revise your, revise this and come back to us, we've offered that in general.
That's different? So that is, that's when the Board needs additional information, that maybe as the presentation goes on, the applicant's not prepared to present in order to make a determination? What have we done historically?
Historically, we've said it at the beginning of the case and then directly prior to the vote. So we've given them two options.
One, one thing that we don't want to give you a preview of how the Board might vote or what's going to happen. Really, it's your choice. If you choose to postpone and come before a full Board, you would need four of seven to pass. Tonight, there's one less Board member, you would need four of six. I will give you the opportunity initially when you come forward, and it's your choice. And, you know, we're not going to, obviously, as you go along, tell you how we're going to vote until we have all the information before us. Each case is treated on its own merits, and that's the way typically we handle it. But I appreciate that question. I, I think initially, we're going to do it when you approach, and, and then...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it seems to me that would be more streamlined, the approach, to allow that election to be made at the outset of the presentation, because then if the person is going to elect to come back the following meeting, then that avoids us to have a duplicate presentation with some of the facts being presented in one meeting and some of the facts potentially being presented at the second meeting. So that's my thought process.
No, I agree, Mr. Hoke. I think the concern too is, is you could very possibly, and I think probably will, have two different Boards that will sit here. So the members that were not present here tonight would have an op, would not have had the opportunity to hear the presentation. So we're going to ask you when you come up, if you'd rather do that. You can elect to do it without penalty. It's not like they charge you something else. It's because we're down a member for tonight's meeting. So with that, I agree, we're going to do that at the beginning. When you come up, you can put on the record whether or not you would like to defer and postpone your case to the October meeting. Okay? With that having been said, let's read the first, first case.
The Appeal of Tara Forshaw and Jason Benoit for a variance from Section 220-25B-1A of the zoning ordinance of the Town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 204 Park Ridge Drive, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, to construct a six-foot fence exceeding the height limit in both side yards. Fence Section 220-25B-1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot high fence is located in both side yards. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required for each side yard. Ten notices were mailed, zero responses.
Could the applicant come forward, please? Please be sure to state your names and your address for the record.
My name's Jason Benoit, and this is my wife Tara Forshaw. Live at 204 Park Ridge Drive, Niskuna, New York. We are here for the variance of the fence.
Okay, tell us a little bit about your fence. Obviously, you're looking to put up a six-foot fence in certain areas. So tell us a little bit about what you're seeing.
First of all, our yard is a small yard. We're looking to use more of the yard on the side for fence. We both, we have two dogs, and there's, in the neighborhood, there's a lot of kids, smaller kids that go around and play. So for a four-foot fence, we don't feel it would be as safe for kids, because they could reach over.
They're very adventurous children.
And also recently, because we have windows on both sides, for me is, I go, you know, have to work at night sometimes. I want, I want it to be safe. And recently, we just had an issue where a Niskuna police officer's trailer was broken into in front of his house, two houses down from us, and the corrections officer's car was stolen right out of his garage, right down the street from us. So it made it even more for us, for me personally, to feel more secure to have that fence on the side that's high enough covering the windows also.
It restricts the access, so you wouldn't have access to that window, both the, the window to the house and also the windows to the basement.
Couple of quick questions. There's no existing fence right now where, where you're at?
That's correct, in our yard, yes.
So you're not replacing something? This is a brand-new fence?
Yes.
Brand-new construction, yes.
The fence is, is not up yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it looked like, from my review of this, you, the, the neighbor, at least on one side, had a fence. Is that right?
That's correct.
What about the neighbor on the other side?
No.
Okay. Now, only because you're the first one, we've got three fence cases tonight, so I want to make sure this is understood. It's a little confusing. You can't have a fence, a six-foot fence, in the side yard or front yard. The six-foot fence would have to go from the back of the house, back corner of the house, and then you can have a six-foot fence around the back part of your yard. So that's the, the code as we speak. And what you're looking for is to then extend that fence forward into your side yards. So that's kind of the issue that we're dealing with. Okay?
Yes.
All right. What kind of fence is it, by the way?
It's a white vinyl. Two of our other neighbors, well, the one neighbor directly next to us has the white, the same white vinyl, and another house across the street has a white vinyl as well.
Yeah, we're purposely matching.
We're looking to try and match the neighborhoods, not change the character.
The kids you were talking about, are they your kids or they neighborhood kids?
They're just neighborhood kids.
Okay.
We live in a cul-de-sac, and the entire cul-de-sac is almost like a, a playland. So every kid goes through the yard. We've had kids on our backboards, like, when we're having dinner, just, it's, it's a great, you know...
Totally fine with, but...
With the dogs, and they just run up and just, with our dogs, completely friendly. They just love to adventurous, run up and grab them and, you know, pet and stuff. So we're just more worried about if we're not physically there with a four-foot fence, would they reach over? And how would the dogs react with someone with us not there, with the dogs being there?
What kind of dogs do you have?
So we have a Malinois, and then we have a Rottweiler mix.
Okay.
Which the Rottweiler mix is a puppy, so we're looking, I did talk to the town clerk, because if you do luck, she's not registered yet, but she told me to wait, because she's being spayed in like, next week. So she told me to hold on, because I have four months.
Okay. All righty. Open it up to the Board, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Benoit, with respect to this diagram, this was prepared by the installers at Lowe's for you. And I see on the diagram, I can't really see it up there, but in the package we received, there's, there's an indication where your neighbor's fence is to the right of you. Can you see it on that diagram?
Yes.
I can't really see it there.
It's a dotted line.
It's actually offset. Their fence isn't on their property line, so it's actually over a little bit. So we've, they devised a plan to put a pole in the middle, so it wouldn't make it look any worse and have it come over.
Okay, that was, okay, well, that's, that's good in terms of the installation process. But I guess my point was, their fence runs from their back, their back corner of their house on that diagram, right? Because your house and their house is about the same location.
On that side, yes, but our other neighbor's house does not have the same plane. So if they ever decide to put up a fence, it's going to not be the same distance. It's not going to be uniform.
I, I guess my point is, your neighbors have, their, their fence is the code, right?
Yes, correct.
So, and if you move your fence back to the back corners of your property line, you could have the six-foot fence you were looking for and be the code as well, correct? So we're only talking about the different, the small...
Just 13 feet.
The 13 feet. So I understand you, your issue with respect to the dogs and the children, that's something that commonly, virtually everybody that presents, and I, I appreciate that you don't come before the zoning Board very often, ever.
Never.
So I understand that that's not brought to your attention, but these are the same concerns everybody or most people have. So, you know, and, and there is a bias in the town code. It's, it's in the code against six-foot fences. So I guess I'm trying to ascertain what, what extraordinary circumstances that you have that would...
Well, we are trying to make our yard bigger. It's a new construction home. I didn't have the option to change where I wanted the house, because I did try to do that. But then if I did that, then I was breaking other codes with you. So I couldn't move the house. So the option to potentially fight for a fence variance seemed more reasonable than to try to fight you to move a whole house.
Well, I don't want to fight with you at all. What I, what I'd like to do is just see if there's a way that you can get, accomplish your goal, which is a fenced-in yard for the, the dogs and, and the children, and promote the privacy you're looking for, without, without granting you the variance, quite frankly. Because from my perspective, you, you could either, you had two options, either to move the fence back to the back corners of the property, or alternatively to put a four-foot fence in and then elevate it to a six-foot fence when you get to the back corner of your property. I mean, those are both options that are available to you, correct?
Yeah, I personally don't like the, the split look. I actually think that looks not aesthetically pleasing.
The actual owner of the house next to us wasn't the owner when this was done. This was actually the showhouse, the one that you're showing next to us. They did that when the person moved in, because she immediately just wanted, they wanted a fence for the show. The, actually, our neighbor next to us would have done exactly what we're saying if they would have had the option when she first moved in with that fence.
Sure, I guess my point just is, you would agree that there are options available to you, that you could, you could get most of what you're looking for without the need for a variance.
Well, no, because I couldn't make my yard bigger. If, I, I could make it bigger, but I'd have to be responsible to my dogs, really. And I'd have to make a six-foot fence. So I would have to bring it back to, to there. I couldn't do the, the four-foot option. My one dog would clear the fence.
Okay.
So that's not really an option for me. So the only other option is to just do it to code, which doesn't accomplish trying to make a bigger backyard. It's a very, it's, it's pretty small. It's only 32 feet out. So if by the time you put a patio or, you know, something like that, you really don't have a lot of space.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I have a few questions for you. For the portion that is in the side yard, and I believe you said it was roughly 13 feet from the back corner of your house forward that you were looking at that being placed. Would you consider a five-foot fence or, and I just want to lay out some options that may make it possible for you to move forward? If you went with a four-foot fence but had a top on it that was, let's say, a lattice? I didn't hear the type of fence. I know that you said it was white vinyl, but was it of a certain pattern, like completely closed or...
Yeah, it's completely closed.
Okay.
Honestly, I didn't even think that counted, because it still comes up high if it's lattice. So doesn't it incorporate the whole thing? I mean...
There are options for shorter pieces of lattice, is what I'm trying to get at, so that you could do something to work towards that four-foot level instead of staying at the six-foot level. That's, I'm just asking you to consider the potential options there.
So it, but it couldn't be any higher than four foot, correct?
Four foot is the...
With the lattice included?
Well, I'm just suggesting that if you were going to go with a four-foot solid...
Yeah.
And then potentially something on top of that, but not as high as the extra two feet.
Oh.
Would you work with us on that?
I honestly think my dog would still clear it.
Is that because of the jumping of the dog, like they're able to jump that high? Another question, and it's not exactly about the fence, but in the packet, it is showing that there's a shed to be in the backyard. It's part of the package from Lowe's that was attached, and it seems like it's going to be 64 square feet. I just want to make sure there's no issues with its placement relative to property line. It's not something that was in there, but I just want to make sure that they're not coming back to us for another variance related to that portion of it, if, if there's something that needs to be done there.
So under 120 square feet, so 64 square feet can be five feet from either property line. But we don't have an application, I think, for the shed, so they would have to make sure that they're five feet from the property lines in order to be compliant there. Thank you.
Other questions by the Boards?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. On the side, I know we talked about, Mr. Hoke asked you a question about the fence on the right side, and it's back to the house. And then you mentioned on the left side, what's going on on the left side?
It would be the same exact thing.
So do they have a fence?
No, there's no fence on the left side.
Oh, no, they don't have a fence, no.
They don't have a fence?
No.
So, since we're talking about neighbors, have you talked to your neighbors about fences?
Yes.
And did the neighbor that has the fence to the back...
All were fine with it.
They're fine with it. But how about their fence? If that was precedent that they got to come back and have the fence up to the front of the house?
I don't know that she'd actually do that.
Well, that's the problem with fences. If, if you approve it to you, then everybody's going to say...
Well, for her, she would, she would have to change, her goes, because she's on a corner, and it's a weird corner. There's four foot...
Let's, let's go back to the house on the other side. Is it built already?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And they planning to put a fence?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, last question for you. Do you have any doors on the side of the house that they need to be inside of a fence? Do you have any doors?
Doors, no.
So your door is from the back?
Correct.
Backyard? All right, thank you.
Any other questions by the Board? Now, after telling everybody I was going to ask you at the beginning if you wanted to proceed, I promptly didn't do that. So I apologize, but I will ask you now, as you, as we indicated, you have six members of the Board. You still need four to approve your variance. You have the option of tabling this to the October meeting. Would you like to do that?
Well, seeing that this doesn't pose any environmental, this variance doesn't pose any environmental threat or safety issue as far as backing out of a driveway or anything like that, it's really just about our quality of life in our backyard, more than anything. And obviously, to keep our dogs in and be responsible pet owners. I think I'm going to take my chances, I guess. I hope I'm making the right decision. But our house is so set back that, I mean, no one would be, you wouldn't even probably notice it if I weren't calling your attention to it.
And I know you said before about the other fences and people moving them up. Our houses are not exactly, you're going to have staggered fences, no matter what you do. And most of the houses, our neighbor, the one you were saying, if they had a fence, who doesn't? Even if they put a fence up, their fence is probably going to be four feet further back than ours. And the person behind us, their fence is probably about 30 feet from the other neighbor's house as far as for how the fences would be staggered.
Because we all don't have the same type of...
Understood.
And also, we did find two other houses that have the six-foot fence on their side yard that comes right up to their, actually, to the end of their house on one of them. And their driveway is half the size of ours, so that it's closer to the road. And then the other house basically kind of was the same setup. It came halfway, which is pretty much what we're looking to do. And that was the one on River Road.
We're set back about 50, or 40, or 50 feet from the actual curb, and probably about 55 to 60 feet from the middle of the road.
So what, what is your option? Would you like to proceed tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned the garage is the, as I face the front of your house, your garage is on your right?
Correct.
And is the garage on the side of the...
It's front-facing.
Front-facing, okay. And remind me again, your neighbor's fence, you said, was not on their property line. You would be putting a fence on or near your property line, so you'd have two fences with a gap in between.
Yeah, well, you can't really...
Yeah, we can't, I mean, we've gotten permission from her if they wanted to put it that way. Lowe's doesn't like, and other installers don't like connecting directly, so their philosophy was to put a decorative, just another pole in between there and have them connect, so it doesn't, it looks seamless. So they will actually make it match. There's not going to be like a space going all the way through. They're actually going to cover up the space.
Okay.
Which that would happen regardless of this variance or not.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand. Before we look for a motion, any other questions? Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on the issue? Hearing none, and we had no letters, right, from neighbors? All right. Is there anyone on the Board who would like to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a, a motion, Mr. Chairman. I would like to move to deny the application as written. As far as, and here's my reasoning, as far as a benefit being achieved by other means, I actually don't think you can. Having been a handler in my life, I certainly understand a Malinois can certainly leap. I, I do, we have typically found, and I do find in this case, that the six-foot fence does create an undesirable change in the neighborhood. We have, and I will continue to hold that this 13-feet-ish is a substantial variance. I don't see any adverse environmental impact. I, I do see that this is self-created, and for those reasons, Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the application as written.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I, I will second that motion. I, I'm torn in this situation, because I have three dogs myself, including adopting two hunting dogs, and we don't hunt. So they are bundles of energy, and I think the fence, and I, and I live on a corner lot, which is like the sum of all fears from a six-foot...
I think their sons went to school together.
I believe they did as well, so... But in any event, the, the situation really is, is applying the test that we have, whether you meet the standard. And the standard, from my perspective, is can you achieve your goals? Not, not the perfect outcome for you, but can you achieve a large percentage of your goals without needing the variance? And I find that you, coming from a family with three dogs and no fence, that it's possible. It might be more difficult, and I appreciate that. And I, and I understand that your circumstances certainly would make having a, a fence, you know, the benefit to it, but you, you can still have a fence. You just can't ask to start from the back, back corner of your property. Whether there's an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I would find that, no. I don't find that your fence seems like it's been well-thought-out and, you know, well-sourced, and you're, you're looking for a fence that's consistent with the other, the, the character of the neighborhood. So I don't find that it would create an undesirable effect on the neighborhood. With respect to the request being substantial, from the Board's perspective, and looking at these six-foot fence applications that come virtually every month, we do find them substantial as a matter of course. So, you know, we have to balance these factors that I'm outlining. In addition to that, you know, is there going to be any adverse physical or environmental impacts? Well, I would have to say yes, in the sense that, you know, the Town Board has expressed a desire not to have six-foot fences. That's embodied in the code. So, you know, it would have an impact, you know, a, a physical or environmental impact that I would say is present. And was the alleged difficulty self-created? All of these applications are self-created to a certain extent, because you're applying for variance, right? So I would say no. So in your situation, it's a close call. But absent some kind of special circumstance that wouldn't be consistent with what we see in every application, I'm not seeing why this application should be treated differently. So for, for that, that reason, I would move to second the application, or second, second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hoke?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
This is, I'm going to say yes, and just explain that some of the cases sometime, very rare we approve the fences to be to the front or... we approve the fences to be to the front or halfway to the house, and usually, the property has to be very unique. And in this case, I see the difficulty was self-created, because the applicant can put the fence to the back of the house and still have a nice backyard, and it will be even with the neighbor too.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, and just with the note that we tried to offer options for you to work with us on that, and that seemed to be not in your interest.
Mr. Green?
You know, I'm sympathetic to your application. You have children in the neighborhood, you got dogs, and you probably have children in the neighborhood and dogs available for one part. One of my concerns is, is that if this variance were to be granted, or if I were to help in favor of it, it owns the property forever. For the other reasons, say, I'm going to, yes, to in my application.
Chairperson Frere?
I'm gonna echo what Mr. Hope said. One of the major issues for us is, are there other alternatives? It's never the perfect alternative, but it does provide an alternative to allow you to have a six-foot fence, but to conform to the code as it's written, which is what we're required to do. You can have the six-foot fence, but it has to start at the back corner of your house. The only other option is to transition from four foot to six foot. I understand that's not desirable, you don't like the look, and certainly, that is absolutely your, at your discretion. But as we stand now, for all the reasons that have been stated, I'm gonna vote yes as well. Sorry, your variance has been denied. Okay. Thank you for coming. Call the next case.
The appeal of Sarah Gorm and Joe Johnson for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 1185 Highland Park Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, to construct a six-foot fence exceeding the height limit in the side yard. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As proposed, a six-foot fence, high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. Twelve notices were mailed, four responses.
From Diane Bennett, "To whom it may concern, I write in support of the appeal of Sarah Gorm and Joe Johnson for a variance from Section 220-25B1A regarding the property at 1185 Highland Park Road. Sarah and Joe have made numerous improvements to the home, both inside and out. They are good neighbors and are in need of the privacy of a six-foot high fence that would provide to their side yard. I have a direct line of sight to their home from my porch and find no issue with this variance. The request for permission to build a six-foot fence in their side yard has my full support. Sincerely, Diane Bennett, 1178 Highland Park Road, Niskuna, September 7, 2022. To the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my wife and I have owned 1173 Highland Park Road since 2011. We are writing in support of our neighbors, Joe Johnson and Sarah Gorm, and their request to install a fence in their yard at 1185 Highland Park Road. They are excellent neighbors, take great care of their home and property, and are wonderful members of the Niskuna community. We fully support their efforts in this project. If we can be of further assistance, please feel free to contact us. Tim and Audrey Rafinin, 1173 Highland Park Road, August 30, 2022. Town of Niskuna Building Department. Sarah Gorm and Joe Johnson are our neighbors on Highland Park Road. They are great neighbors and have done a lot to improve their property since they have lived there. Unfortunately, we have a neighbor who has let their property decline. It is understandable that the Johnsons would need to put up a privacy fence to protect the value of their property. We are in support of any variance that would, they would need to get the privacy they deserve. Their proposed fence would be a significant improvement. Michelle and Tom Gada, 1182 Highland Park Road, Niskuna, New York. September 12. "To whom it may concern, I am writing this letter in support of my next-door neighbors, Sarah Gorm and Joe Johnson, who are interested in installing a fence on their property. It is my understanding that a small section of the fence would be taller than town regulations allow. I urge you to allow them to install the fence as they have planned. Sarah and Joe are both exceptional neighbors, they take pride in their property and maintain it at a very high standard. They are also conscientious and respectful neighbors who are consistently doing home improvements, which not only increase the value of their own home, but also the surrounding properties. I have spoken to Sarah and Joe at length about the type of fence they hope to install, and the location in their yard they wish to install it. I am confident that any fence they install will not only look beautiful, but enhance the value of the property and by default, be a benefit to all their neighbors. I urge you to please allow them to go forward with their plans. If you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Deandra McComer, 1918 Country Club Drive East."
Okay, can you please give us your name and your address?
I'm Sarah Gorm.
Joe Johnson, both 1185 Highland Park, Niskuna.
Tell us a little bit about what you're looking to do.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I may have missed it, but I think I...
No, you did not miss it. Are you choosing to go forward?
Yes.
We are.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
I was gonna do it again.
No worries.
We're here to appeal for a variance for a six-foot fence along the side of our garage, this approximate eight foot in length, to improve privacy as well as property value, not only for ourselves, but also for the affected neighbor.
So the six-foot fence, as I look at your diagram here, as I'm facing your house...
Yes.
Is on the left side, which is the side of your driveway and garage?
Correct.
Yes.
And it's going to run from the sidewall of your house out and then back, eight feet, did you say?
The entire fence will be approximately 100 feet. The area in question for which we need the variance is about eight feet.
Okay.
And it's along the garage.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And are you enclosing the entire yard?
No.
Just that side?
Just that side. There is a fence on the other side, if you're facing the house on the right, there is a fence, cedar fence, and we're putting up a cedar fence as well that will match.
Now tell me a little bit, you've provided some photographs of some hedges, overgrown hedges and whatnot by the neighbor. Give us a little information about that.
So currently, there exists a chain link that was pre, like installed before we moved in. It sits directly on the property line. So we have about, it's about four-foot, nine-inch area that leads, it's like a pathway from our front to our backyards, and that's where we keep our trash cans. And it's, the neighbor, they do not maintain their yard as well, so it's heavily overgrown. It is in bad disrepair. We've had to, this hedge in question I sent a picture of, because we ripped that all out ourselves and installed new arborvitae. It's provided that it's evidence of our efforts to try to improve the property value for both homes, really. And so, we really don't have, because it's only four-foot, nine inches between the chain link that exists in our house, our garage, we don't have any room to put, like, we were gonna extend the arborvitae, but there's just not space, because that's where we, that's where the trash cans go. So dragging the trash cans in and out would destroy the arborvitae.
I'll just quickly add also that another reason why we couldn't extend the arborvitae's further is that we have a door coming out of our garage, and there's just not enough, there's just not enough room. We need to do, we need to do the fence.
Yeah.
Could you go back to the last photo, Laura, please? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, I did, I didn't have to do that.
So these are the arborvitae on the screen, on the photograph on the right that you planted?
Correct.
Now, are those on your property or your neighbor's property?
It's right on the property line, because the hedge that was there was our neighbor's. However, they just, they never maintained it, and so it actually collapsed, both on their house as well as onto our, like, our garage, there were trees collapsed against it.
When you say you were going to extend the arborvitae, what do you mean?
So, the eight-foot, the eight-foot portion that we're asking for the variance upon, it's eight foot in length, and we want to add the six-foot fence, is along the garage further up. So, and the reason why we can't extend the arborvitae's to cover that eight-foot portion is because there's just not enough room between our garage and the existing property line, and there's also a door coming out of our garage, so we can't extend the...
So you were gonna extend them forward towards the garage itself, the front?
Backwards.
Oh, backwards.
So we're gonna put a privacy fence up in an area that's not, you know, where there's not a variance necessary.
So where is the privacy fence you're putting up gonna go in relation to the arborvitae?
Back, behind, I think there's another picture. I can go, right, so right there, you see that, that's my neighbor's gate, and it's a six-foot gate that leads to her chain link. So, we're, we were, see that dirt path? That's where we pulled up all the stone, because we're gonna, we're gonna put in new stones, we have a fence in.
Yeah. Just talk very loudly, so they pick you up on the microphone.
So the eight-foot fence will go here, here, and if we could maybe go back to the arborvitae photo, if that would be possible? That's where, that's where we're looking. So when we're talking about the fact that we could extend the arborvitae, we could extend that path here.
I understand now. Is the chain link fence still there?
It is still there, yeah.
Okay, but that's on your neighbor's...
It's on the property.
Property line?
Yeah.
And it just does not provide enough privacy.
I got you. So I'll open it up to the board for any questions?
Yeah, quick question. The fence already there is four feet?
Correct.
Correct.
And just to understand this, you said, you mentioned eight feet, is that from the back of the house to how far?
To that gate, that wooden gate to the back of our garage.
So from the front of your house to the back of the house, how far is that? What's the wood say?
10 feet, maybe, 12 feet?
From the front of the house to the back of the house?
He's talking like the very front of the house.
Oh, God. Yeah, yeah, at least 20 feet.
So of those 20 feet, is that you're looking to put a fence eight feet, 12 feet away from the front?
No, it's all in the back. It's from this edge of our garage, all the way back.
So you see that blue there?
Yes.
Is that where you're gonna start your fence, your six-foot fence?
Correct.
So from that blue to the front of the house, I'm assuming if you said it was 20 feet, so you should have 12 feet left, true or not?
Yeah, from the fence.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on one second if you could. We just need to know who you are.
Neighbor.
Okay. Why don't you come up and just tell us who you are and where you live?
Hi, folks, I'm Victoria McLaughlin, I reside at 1202 Highland Park.
Okay.
She came as support, yes.
So now you can talk to the microphone if you need to say something.
Okay, so just to clarify, you are probably correct that there is 12 feet from the top of that blue?
Yep.
Sorry, yeah. The lateral blue line to the front of their house.
Right.
But again, you're just talking, they have, or that whole section right there is all garage.
Okay, so that's, so that's a garage, but on the other side, it's part of the house, right?
Yeah.
So the garage is even with the house, kind of?
Or is it? The garage is set back from the front of the house.
It's set back a little bit?
Yeah, yeah.
How many feet is that?
12, probably.
Okay, so now if we go on the other side...
Yeah.
You put in a fence there too, right?
No, no. It's already a six-foot fence.
It is a six...
Yes.
Yes.
And how far is that? Is it to the back of the house, or...
All the way from their side of the house to the very back.
To the back of the property line.
From the side all the way, is that yours or the neighbor's?
The neighbor's.
Because that's their backyard.
Right.
Alright, that's a backyard.
And just...
So we have, we have, yes.
Where's the door? Just so we can get the garage door you said that opens out?
Just show them?
Yes, where is it?
Right in front of the blue line.
Yeah.
Right, it would be, yeah, right in front of the blue, right here, right?
Yeah, right about where that was.
So is that door gonna be inside the fence, or...
No, outside.
Outside, yeah.
So you will have a fence, so you can't really walk out to the street from that door once you put the fence up, right?
No, you can't. But if we wanted to enclose that door in the fence, we'd have to extend it...
Even farther.
Even farther beyond her wooden gate, so, and that would be unsightly, you know, you would have her gate than our gate up, so you would have it, you know?
So, again, and I know you probably said that again, you probably have it on the paper, just for the record, so what is this gonna give you if this board was to allow you to have the fence right where you're asking for? What is it gonna give you guys? It looks like to me there's already a door, but you don't need access to the door, it sounds like, through the fence, right? To get inside the fence?
No, that's not our, right, right.
So, you have a door, right?
Yeah, that leads to the garage.
Leads into the garage.
Yes.
Leads to the garage, from the side.
Yeah.
The fence is not gonna be before that door, right?
Correct.
It's gonna be after.
Correct.
So why do you need, the question I have, why do you need that fence eight feet away from the back of the house?
So primarily for privacy, even our neighbor, they have a deck in their backyard, it looks directly at our garage where our trash cans are. So they have, like, if they're sitting outside eating dinner, they're staring at our trash cans. Us, when we walk, you know, we use that walkway every day to get to the backyard, so you're staring into their yard, which is very unkempt and very dirty.
The answer is, it's privacy.
And property value.
Privacy. But it's not necessarily privacy for you, though. It's privacy...
Privacy for both.
Well, you don't have any windows on that side, right?
Right.
That's your garage.
But if you're in the backyard, you can see very well into both yards.
Your garbage cans, are they, would they, as that's constructed, be inside the fence or outside?
Inside, yeah.
How are you gonna get them out?
We'll have a gate.
So you're planning on putting a gate...
Yeah.
...in the fence?
That abuts her gate.
Yeah, so it's supposed to look nice, so I'm here to support the fact that it would look better to have the gate all be one same plane, A. B, they're trying to create some privacy with this other house in question, because quite frankly, it is of the worst condition in our neighborhood. And so, for all of us, it would be nice if they continued to increase the value of their home, because it helps me when I go to sell my next year, so, yeah.
Just, if you put a four-feet fence, and I know you're talking about privacy, would, because you can have a six-feet from the back of your house and have a four-feet, and you can actually go to the front if you wanted a four-feet.
Yeah, did you, if you could scroll back to some of the other pictures, so there is a four-foot chain link, so it wouldn't accomplish.
But the, but the PVC, are you putting PVC, or what do you put?
Cedar.
Cedar.
Cedar, so the cedar will not, you cannot see through the four-feet, you know what I'm saying?
So, there's, there's, but I think there's also, just to put my two cents in, because that's why I'm here, that what they're not telling you is that they have three dogs, large dogs, what are they, the white ones?
The neighbors.
Yeah, I can't remember what they're called, the white ones. Anyways, there's a lot of...
Great Pyrenees.
Yeah.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
How do I know my dogs?
And there's a lot of fecal matter.
Yeah.
And that's what they're not telling you, is that's why...
The smell is bad. Like, fecal matter all over the yard.
Take care of it.
So if you're on that side of my yard, you can smell it.
But for us to justify the options, the fence, the two-feet fence is not gonna justify the smell, just to tell you, except if you have it closed.
It would, it would improve it, yes.
So, do you, can you think of any other reasons beside that, why you need a six-feet instead of a four-feet?
Well, I feel like a four-foot is not going to, like, it's going to do nothing to my property value. In fact, I think it would actually look worse, because you could still see her chain link, right, you know, you would see two fences abutting.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Other questions by the board?
Just to clarify, I have a couple of questions. The distance between the side of your garage and where the neighbor's gate is, and where that four-foot chain link fence, you just repeat that dimension?
Four foot nine.
Four foot nine, so that's what would face the street, correct?
Yeah, just a four foot nine.
So that's pretty much a whole, the gate itself, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Pretty much? So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, a four-foot high gate there is not something that you think would work or something with...
Well, the gate that's there is six feet, so it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't...
It wouldn't match, but would you consider something that makes a change gradually? I'm just trying to, again, try to put forth some suggestions of options that you could work with us on.
I, I don't see how, because again, I feel like you would still have you, if it's tapering down, you know, to say even my height, five foot.
But it's twelve feet back from the front of your garage, so in terms of an angle like someone walking by, they're going to miss some of that anyway because if it's sloping up, it's back so far. But, that's my opinion. And again, I'm, I'm looking for ways for you to work with us on minimizing what you're asking for. So I'm just asking you to consider, could it be a five-foot fence? Could you do four-foot and a lattice or some other types of things?
I just don't, I don't know how aesthetically that would improve, you know, driving by the houses when you have a six-foot there, you know, then you have uneven gates. I think it would look, aesthetically, I think it would look better to have a straight wall of, of doors, you know, because it would be, I'm, I'm, that's old cedar, so I mean, it would be cedar against cedar. It would be seamless, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, there's been a lot of back and forth. I 100% understand why you're putting up a fence. If you could give me just one or two sentences, because there's been a lot of back and forth, why does this need, in this particular section, why does this need to be six-foot instead of four-foot? Because when I think of a four-foot fence, I mean, I'm six feet tall, right? I'm not a hobbit. Comes up to about my armpits, right? It's not a little tiny like knee-high fence. So, why in this particular spot is it important to be six feet and not four feet?
Because this, the, the area there is our, there's a pre-existing four-foot fence. It does nothing to diminish the view directly into their yard.
Because we'd still be staring at the, you know, we'd still be staring at their backyard and they'd be staring at us, at us. So it's, it's a private, that, that's why we're describing it as a privacy issue. So four-foot really does not do what we want it to, we want to do. We want to have a six-foot fence so that we don't have to stare into that, their backyard and so that they don't have to stare into our garbage cans. That's the easy answer, or the honest answer.
Additionally, I mean, I don't think, you know, I, I'm a huge animal lover, we have a dog, we're very conscientious, and as an animal lover, it's, it's difficult to see those dogs in that situation.
Ms. Gure, Ms. Gureham, I, I think that you're raising some issues that may be outside this, the purview of this board. There may be issues that you could raise with the, you know, the code enforcement officer relative to your neighbor's, neighbor's property. But, but, you know, we have to apply a, a test, a five-point test, okay? So the questions that we're asking you are trying to elicit responses to see from our perspective whether you satisfy the criteria that we're tasked with evaluating, and it's a balancing test. So, even if, for instance, you can establish that the, the fence as you proposed, it is aesthetically pleasing and is a benefit to the neighborhood, that would only be one factor that we have to analyze, okay? So, in other words, if all four other factors, you know, weigh against your application and you, you can establish that one factor that doesn't necessarily balance out, or may not balance out, depending on, you know, how the, how the board views it. So I just, I just want you to know, because I, you know, I appreciate why you're doing it, and, and, you know, I appreciate that you've already put in a lot of work into the, into the yard. The arborvitae's look really nice. I think I read somewhere that you pressure washed your neighbor's house too?
We, we pressure washed the side of her house there.
Pressure washed the side of your neighbor's house?
Yeah.
So it looks like, I assume with his permission or the, the neighbor's permission, but, so it, it does look like you are, you know, you, you, you're, you're trying to take steps to remediate it, which I, which I do appreciate, but as you, you know, heard with respect to other applications, and every application is unique, but, you know, there's this bias against six-foot fences that's embodied, not something we came up with, it's embodied in the town code that we have to deal with, so...
Right.
May I ask a follow-up? Just, may I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Sure.
So you mentioned four other factors. What are those four other factors?
Well, you filled out, when you filled out your application, you went through each one of the factors, okay?
So which, which ones were you referring to?
Well, I mean, there's a self-created hardship, okay, whether it's self-created, whether the benefit can be achieved by other feasible means, whether, we talked about whether this would produce an undesirable change to the neighborhood, and that's what I was speaking to, that I don't, I don't believe it would, you know, from my perspective, from what you're telling me, okay? But then there's also whether the variance is substantial and whether the variance will have an adverse physical or environmental effect on the neighborhood or district. So we have to take all those factors and, and balance them. And you do, you, you did answer each one of those questions, but your application, what you're presenting, from my perspective, is squarely on number two, which is, this is going to benefit the, is going to benefit us, it's going to benefit the neighborhood, and it's, it's, it's the most pleasing the way that we've, we've laid it out, right? So that, that's my understanding.
I don't under, I feel like I, we have hit all of those five points.
Which other, yeah, which other factor, is there any issue with any of the other factors?
Well, yeah, with respect to the feasibility from, from the perspective, there's other options for you, and the board members have laid out what other options are available. You could move it back to the back corner of your yard and you would only need a, a six-foot, you wouldn't need any variance at that point. You could taper it, you know, you can include a four-foot fence and taper it up. Those are the other feasible alternatives to accomplish, again, like the last applicant, a, a significant portion of what you're looking for, but not necessarily make it a perfect resolution. So, I mean, I'm not trying to be antagonistic with you.
No.
I'm just saying that, that's from my perspective. Other people, members of the board may see it differently, so I don't speak for everybody. I'm just telling you, you know, I'm being candid with you. I appreciate you've been candid with the, the board here tonight, so...
Well, yeah.
I'm just trying to...
One other point, like, the most egregious section of the fence where the big, the biggest line of view into the yard is the area in question. The rest of that fence, like, where we would put the fence back is vegetated because...
You have the arborvitae there?
No, it's, it's her overgrowth that has overgrown into the chain link that it's, it's, it's pretty, you know, it's, it's, there's not a direct line of view. The area in question is directly, it's direct view into her backyard. And I, I don't know that, like, putting, if we put a four-foot fence right up against that chain link, how is that aesthetic, I mean, that doesn't, that's not aesthetic pleasing.
Again, you're talking about that, that small section of four-foot fence, so it's, you have to, you have to have a four-foot fence along the entire length of it. Here's a question for you, and I, I'm sure you're going to tell me that you, you've exhausted this remedy, but you've spoken with your neighbor and just asked whether you could cut back the hedge that you find unsightly.
We do, I mean, because it's on our property.
So, so you cut it back when it goes, when it, when it goes through the fence onto your property, you cut it back?
Correct.
Right?
Because otherwise it, it doesn't get touched.
Have you talked to the neighbor about potentially remediating it even further, potentially removing it, anything like that, or you're, you're not in a position to do that?
We've talked, communication is, is difficult with this neighbor. We have, I did talk to her about the fence, I asked her if she had any objections and she offered no comment. The, the neighbor to the back, who, I spoke with him, he was in full support. I asked him if he had any objections, he said no.
I appreciate the information you've indicated.
Go ahead, Laura. Okay, just a quick question. I want to come back and I know about the gate, you talked about the gate. Again, I'm trying to figure out a way, so that gate, how wide is that gate that was in that picture?
Um...
So what I'm trying to, just to tell you, so if you can tell me that gate is four feet and then you're asking for eight feet, and maybe you can reduce it just to cover where that gate is for four feet.
So put our, our gate would be four feet, her gate six feet?
So you'll have your gate, whatever that gate is, and then you, you're asking, I'm not saying that's what you're going to do, I'm just making a recommendation, instead of eight feet, you go to four feet with a six-feet. So you amend your application, but that's something you'll be willing to do, not, I'm not saying that you should do it. Would that work for you? Would that work if you have a, instead of eight feet, four feet of six-feet fence? Would that cover that gate we're talking about?
I suppose we could consider that, yeah.
Yeah, we would consider that.
So, can we, can we have, the applicant likes to amend their application, can we do that?
The only issue is that how would we...
I'm sorry, just a minute. The applicant would have to be the one, but to be quite honest with you, I don't really fully understand what the amendment would be.
They ask him for, instead of eight feet, it would be only four feet from the backyard, from the back of the house.
Oh.
So you're saying you would, you're proposing and that they would move, move it back closer to the back edge of...
They say in eight, eight feet, instead of eight feet, it would be four feet, right, Laura? They ask him for eight feet from the back of the house?
From the back, yeah. It's about an eight-foot section.
Yeah, I mean, similar to when you had the previous applicant on the one yard where the backyard was, and you had him go for half of what that variance was that they asked for.
How, that's a twenty feet, right? That, from the front to the back?
Um, I mean, we don't have the exact measurements on this, like, we can use, we can use kind of approximates, I guess. Um, you know, like, if I measure it on an aerial, it's like ten feet. It's, it's just approximate, like, they're estimating and I'm estimating.
I mean, I, I totally understand that you're, you're trying to appease, you know, trying to work with us, it's just that...
It's not about working with you, I'm just giving you an alternative, and the only alternative I'm given because you mentioned that gate. That's the only alternative. Otherwise, that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions by the board? Anyone else in the audience? We've obviously heard from one neighbor already, which I appreciate you coming forward. Anyone else that wishes to be heard? If not, I'm going to take this one myself. As was noted from the last case, this board is typically, does not grant fence variances absent some type of novel, unique situation such as configuration of the property, safety issues, living on a very busy road, that type of thing. First of all, I think that, that we should acknowledge the hard work that this applicant has put in to deal with what is less than a desirable situation next to them and done it, from my perspective, fairly gracefully. One of the, as we look at other feasible alternatives, one of the classic feasible alternatives that we suggest to applicants is the natural barrier of arborvitae. They've done that to the extent that they can without literally using up the, the viable space that's next to their house and, as they've indicated, and I have no reason to doubt them, they can't extend it any further. So, I don't see another viable alternative. The question is, is could they move it to the back corner of the house? Well, that doesn't achieve the purpose. What they're looking at is a chain link fence, which essentially you can see through. And obviously, what they're looking at is an unkept yard, number of dogs, as they've indicated, dog excrement all over the yard, which is unsightly to them, and an unkept property and hedge which borders their property. This one section that they're looking at, while there's, there are no windows on that section, it's still their property and usable yard, and I don't see an alternative other than attempting to put up a six-foot fence to, to block that view. We're not talking about a fence that's going to encompass the backyard or that extends on the other side of the house. A four-foot fence, regardless of it being in place, you still have the same view over a four-foot fence. So I don't see that there's another viable alternative to achieve, given the situation they're presented with, to achieve what they want to achieve. Is it going to be a detriment to nearby properties? That's almost a laughable statement, given the fact that the neighboring property is a detriment to theirs at this point, and that's why they're looking to put in a privacy fence. The fence is tasteful, and I think it probably will, on that side of the house at least, improve. We've got four neighbors, which have, and, and ma'am, I don't know if you were the fifth or you were one of the fourth, so we have five neighbors, one here in person, who has spoken in, in favor of this and clearly sympathized with the applicant, given the conditions that they're confronted with next door. Is it substantial? As we indicated in the last case, fencing, fence, six-foot fence variances are always substantial, but in this case, I think it's warranted. It's self-created, it's not determinative of our analysis, but it does exist. For those reasons, I am going to vote that we approve the two-foot variances requested. There's been a motion, is, I'm sorry. There's been a motion, is there a second?
I second the motion, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to applaud the applicant for being willing to do an alternative if needed to change it, to make it work, to get their privacy, and also want to thank the neighbor in the back that came in to tell the board that this will enhance the neighborhood by allowing this six-feet fence to be in place. I second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Mr. Hope?
Unfortunately, and I think I, I somewhat tipped my hand, I am going to have to vote against the motion, and my concern is not so much that I disagree with Mr. Frary's recitation of the facts, I just apply it a little differently. I'm concerned about placing value judgments on your concerns about privacy versus the privacy that was articulated by the first applicant this evening, and to indicate that we would improve your application on similar privacy concerns and say that that, you know, establishes or kind of trumps the need for, to ignore that there are other feasible alternatives in terms of either moving the fence or putting the four-foot fence up, and I appreciate that that would not achieve your goals to the extent that you're looking for them to be achieved. It's not the perfect resolution, it's not the perfect outcome for you, but it is an alternative that would accomplish 70% of what you're looking to achieve. So, that is largely my concern, and I, I similarly applaud all the efforts that you've put in. I think I, I outlined, or, you know, I thought it was very, I thought it was interesting that you went, took the time to pressure wash your neighbor's house. I don't know that there'd be too many applicants that, that would, would take the time to do that. So I do appreciate that you're, you're taking efforts and I, I'm not trying to undermine the concerns that you have. But when I'm balancing the factors, I indicated that, you know, as proposed, it's not going to have an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I think that's pretty, pretty well established, but I do think that it's substantial, and I do believe that the overall bias that this board has shown in, in circumstances where, as Mr. Frary indicated, it wasn't a novel or super unique type circumstance and that privacy is a legitimate concern of virtually every applicant that comes before us. And I'm concerned about picking winners and losers and placing value judgments. That's, so from my perspective, that's where I'm coming from, and I would vote no on the motion for that reason.
Mr. Latif?
I'm going to vote yes, and as I said before, the fence is usually is substantial when they come to... when they come to six feet, but in this situation, it was reasonable for me to make a motion and support it, yes.
Mr. Dolman?
I do find that this benefit could actually be achieved by other means. I understand the need, need for privacy and the aesthetic value here. I don't know that I don't believe that that could be achieved with some other non-six-foot configuration. I do not believe that this is an undesirable change in the neighborhood. Certainly, that's reflected in the fact of not only five, five neighbors supporting, but one actually coming in to support. I'll tell you, most of the time when a neighbor comes in, it's not to support what their neighbor is doing. We do find that this is absolutely a substantial variance. We've, and we will continue to hold that. I don't see any adverse environmental impact. I, I don't actually see that this is a self-created issue, considering the unique circumstances of the neighbor, and so on the balance, I would move to approve the variance.
Ms. Pacheco?
I'm torn on this. Son, I'm torn on this decision. Certainly, as a neighbor, you're trying to do what you think is right for your neighborhood. The benefit, I think, could be achieved by slightly different configuration of the Would it be undesirable change in the neighborhood? I don't think so. The request is substantial as a six-foot fence, where it should be four-foot fence. I don't think it would have adverse physical or environmental effects, and I don't think But as my colleagues have said, it's a balancing act. Wanting to approve something, you know, a variance just because it is the neighbors who may be moving away, who may not be there, we have to keep in mind that this is something that goes with the property. I do understand that the buildings are close to one another. Your neighbor is not that far away. As you said, the plants have fallen both directions onto both buildings. So, I will vote yes to approve this variance.
Mr. Green?
Here we go, for better or worse. You know, I'm looking at this, and, you know, the problem is the allegedly poorly maintained area and the allegedly odorific dog excrement, and, you know, I'm thinking, just saying, wouldn't it be nice if we could all, who are able, you know, make that effort for our neighbors, to trim that hedge, pick up that dog shit? Excuse the French. I love dogs, too, you know, but you gotta pick up after your animals. All right. That being said, those really aren't the factors that I'm looking at, all right? And it's, it's a tough call for me, because, you know, I am constrained to look for, in my estimation, certain things that would take this out of the norm, which is, the norm is no six fence, no six-foot fence. And while this is not necessarily lacking those things, there are some things in my mind which do, on balance, ever so slightly tip in your favor. Yes, are there alternatives that we've discussed? Yes. Are they ideal? Maybe yes, maybe no. But I'm uncertain that you really could obtain what you are seeking with those alternatives, or alternatively, those alternatives would not necessarily be ideal for the, the look and feel of the neighborhood. So, in this case, given the particulars of the matter, for the reasons stated by my colleagues on this board who have voted to approve the motion, I'm also voting to approve it. Yes, on the motion to approve the variance.
Chairperson Frerey?
Yes. The vote is five to one. Your variance is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck with your fence.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Call the next case, please.
The appeal of Donna Elia for a variance from Section 220-18B 3B and Section 220-13 Schedule IB of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna, as it applies to the property at 2532 Rosendale Road, Niskuna, New York, located in the R1 low-density residential zoning district, to maintain a 28-foot diameter above-ground pool partially within the side-yard setback. Section 220-18B 3B states that the required side and rear yard dimensions for major accessory structure shall be the same as applies to the principal building, as defined major accessory structures or detached accessory buildings or other structures in excess of 120 square feet. The pool at 615 square feet is a major accessory structure. Section 220-13 Schedule IB establishes a side setback minimum of 20 feet. As constructed, the pool is located 10 feet from the side property line. Therefore, a 10-foot side yard setback variance is required. Seven notices were mailed out, zero responses.
I'm sorry. I have to introduce ourselves, but they're, okay.
Could you please give us your?
My name is Donna Elia. I live at 2532 Rosendale Road, and Marion Eaton, my partner, who also resides there. But in the attachments we included, I want to make sure you have this, a letter from the neighbor adjacent to the, oh, okay, all right. Sorry, I was temporarily a little.
Not a problem.
Worried.
Please, you've introduced yourself. Please tell us a little bit about what your, what your project.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, if I may.
Yes, and I will ask.
Yes. Yes, we would like.
You would like to proceed?
And if it's okay, we'll both speak, since we've both lived there for more than 20 years.
Absolutely.
Yes.
We'd love to hear from both of you.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
I'm primarily the author of the document that you received that answered the questions, your five points, and am hoping that that fairly well elucidates our situation. I would add, so originally, in the area where that pool is now, was a swing set and playground area for our son, who then outgrew it, and so we had that space left empty. The neighbor, Mr. Richard Malino, would repeatedly say to us, "Well, what would you like? What are you going to do with that empty space? What are you going to do with it? What are you going to do with it?" And I responded, "Well, you know, at some point, when we have the funds gathered together, we're thinking of putting an above-ground pool there." Well, what happened is Mr. Richard Malino called us and said, "My in-laws would like to sell their 28-foot above-ground pool that's been well-maintained for $500. Would you like to purchase it?" And we said, "Yes, of course." We will admit to naivete in terms of the need to, to address a, we didn't realize that there would be a need for variance. As you can see from the diagram, the property is long and narrow, and the placement of the pool is between our property and Maria and Richard Malino's, and they do not have an objection to the placement of it. I would add that since writing the document that I submitted, it occurs to me also to note that there is shrubbery that goes on our property between theirs and ours that grows to about eight or 10 feet high. It's rose of shereen bushes and wiggilia bushes, so those create a natural fence between our property and theirs and visual aspects. As noted also, Mr. Malino helped us locate the spot to place it and actually helped us prepare the ground, so we were moving forward with, with the understanding that they were fine with the placement of the pool. The aspects that are beyond our control are that we've been required to put in a new septic system, which is seen on the diagram there, and that the pool really has not much any other option for placement because of the narrowness of the property, we were required to put in a mound system, and a mound system cannot have a pool sitting on top of it. Likewise, the septic system and pump cannot have the pool sitting on top of it for reasons of maintenance and emptying and so on. And the piping that goes from the septic tank into the house runs to the left side of that pool. If supposedly, we were to be able to pick up that pool and move it over to the west, we would have, we would encounter the same difficulty of having the pool placed with less than 10 feet distance from the boundary line. The boundary on the left side is with Niagara Mohawk. Additionally, there's a hill that, that slopes down significantly right at about the boundary line. So, again, our concern would have been to try and place the pool there, would have required removing trees that then would have made the pool more visible to the neighbors to the west and the neighbors across the street to the, to the north and the northwest. At this point where it sits, the only people that can see it are the Malinos, who have agreed with and hope that the variance will be approved. Just an additional sort of interesting note is that the neighbors, Wendy Matson, who from the front of our house lives over, across the street, came in August to get instructions because they were going to feed our pets while we were away, and she came around to the back where I was working, and she was like, "Oh, I had no idea you had this back here." So, I think that that's, that's evidence of the fact that it is not visible to anybody else other than the Malinos, and that given the requirements of following code for the installation of the septic system, we really are quite limited as to where to place the pool.
Yes, and if I might add also, I think that in the course of the, having people install it, when we were finally able to get that done, because initially with COVID, people were only installing pools that they sold. The installers and then the electrician, nobody raised the issue about a need for a 10-foot variance because the standard is 10 feet from the property line, and so I have to also say, as Marion did, that we did not realize that because we're in a low-density housing area, that it required an additional 10 feet. So, we apologize for that. We do believe that it is not only welcomed by the neighbor who can see it, but really not a detriment to the neighborhood in, in any way.
Thank you. Questions by the board?
Just a couple of questions about drainage of the pool. How long you had the pool?
It's only been up since, and usable since the 4th of July weekend, by the time we got the installers and whatnot.
We did have a lot of rain, and I know pools, they overfill. If you can explain to me, does it cause any, any problem to the people who wrote you a letter? Any water issues when you had to drain it and so on? And what are you doing to eliminate that kind of issue?
Okay. So far, we've been lucky. It hasn't overflowed. We didn't super full it, fill it. We filled it to the extent such that the pump would work and continue to recycle the water. As also stated, the ground is level, so it's not, and at the point that we need to drain it down, which will be coming probably in a few weeks as, as it gets closer to winter, we have a long tubing hose, and as you can see with the diagram, you can see where the mound is, and then it goes down a steep hill that goes into the Lyshak Hill Preserve.
Okay.
So, we're backed up to the Lyshak Hill Preserve, and so that long hose tubing, we would just run down along the side and.
So, you are, your house is to the left of the Lyshak Hill Preserve?
No, the Lyshak Hill Preserve is directly behind our house.
Oh, it's behind you.
Directly behind it.
Yes, and if I might add also, when we had, a few years back, water problems in the basement, we had a French drain installed, and the piping goes and like the drains off into the Lyshak Hill Preserve, so we, we just, we sort of have a natural drainage possibility with the Lyshak Hill Preserve being behind us.
Good to know. Last question from me, and I'll turn it to you with the rest of the board. You mentioned on the other side, it slopes down a little bit. Can you just tell me how wide is that section where it slopes?
The slope starts right at our boundary line.
At the boundary?
Yeah. Actually, yeah, the.
So, how far is that?
Property comes, it slopes, our boundary pool would be like right here as it's starting to slope and goes straight north to south.
And the septic tank is in the backyard?
It is. It's where that diagram shows it. That was the, that was the engineer's diagram.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. I saw notes that the engineer told you, you cannot put that pool close to the septic tank, right?
Mm-hmm. Right, that is correct.
For that, of record.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions. How wide is the property?
I should know the answer to that.
Well, does it, it doesn't say on this diagram?
I don't believe so. I, I see elevation markings and you can see the grade that you're talking about.
Well, the dashed and dotted line, those are our boundary lines.
Right, I'm just trying to understand how wide it is, just for record. I, I can see that it's narrow, but, you know, is it 80 feet, 100 feet?
It's approximately 75.
Approximately 75. Okay, so with the width of the house and where the pool is and the restrictions that your engineer gave you on where you could place the pool, it seemed like that was the optimum place, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the, the dashed line towards the bottom of this plan that says approximate top of bank, 80-foot ravine drop-off, that's the top of the hill that goes down towards the Lyshak Hill Preserve.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Hearing none. Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this? Hearing no? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going to make a motion to approve the variance, and I'm going to go through why I feel like it should be approved. First of all, I want to applaud the applicants. Both of you did a good job on the application, explained everything very well.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing that. The first thing we have, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, and I see this is the only way the applicant can place, they looked at other spots on the property. The property is narrow. Also, it slopes, there's a slope there. There's a septic tank in the property, and the pool is placed in the best spot in the backyard. Whether the, it causes any undesirable change to the neighborhood, we have no letters from anybody, nobody can see it, and the neighbor that can see the property actually wrote a letter to us in supporting the pool, and we're happy to have the pool there for the neighbor. Whether the request is substantial, 10 feet usually is substantial, but again, in this situation, because of the uniqueness of this property, that is going to cover for me the 10 feet to be not substantial, especially with the limited narrow property you have. Whether the request will have adverse physical or vibrant effect, I don't see that it's going to have any effect on any neighbors or anybody. Even the drainage is going to be limited to Lyshak Hill Preserve down there, so they take care of that. Was this alleged difficulty self-created? Usually, it is self-created. Again, I'm determined on all the options that you viewed, you looked at, and to me, this looks like the best option for the pool, and for all these reasons, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to approve the variance.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. All second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the rule.
Mr. Hope?
Yes, for all the reasons stated.
Mr. Latif?
Yes.
Mr. Dolman?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
There's nowhere else to put this pool. It doesn't change the nature or the quality of the neighborhood. The one person who would care is Ms. Watt.
Thank you.
Ms., Chairperson Farrari?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Your variance request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next case.
Appeal of Arlene Diamant for a variance from Section 220-25B1A of the zoning ordinance of the town of Niskuna as it applies to the property at 888 Benedict Street, Niskuna, New York, located in the RR Rural Residential Zoning District, to maintain a six-foot fence exceeding the height limit of, in the side yard. Fence Section 220-25B1A permits the maximum height for fences located in the front and side yards to be four feet. As built, a six-foot high fence is located in the side yard. Therefore, a two-foot fence height variance is required. 14 notices were mailed, zero responses.
Arlene Diamanti, 888 Benedict Street, and I want to proceed.
Okay, you are willing to prove...
Where were these 14 notices? I'm sorry, I didn't get any.
The notices are mailed out to your neighbors, I believe?
Oh, okay. I thought I got 14.
No, we mailed to a 100-foot radius around your property.
Okay.
We're not scolding you already.
So tell us a little bit about what you're looking...
Okay, so you don't have any letters? Are there supposed to be some letters sent? No. Okay. Well, I want to apologize because I did make a terrible error in those that I already built or I already had the fence installed. I bought the house, well, just recently before the, the fence was installed and I just relied on the fence installer, which I know I shouldn't have done, but... So he, the installer did, well, I don't know, are you, are you talking about the, the distance I'm hearing? He's got from the corner of the house. That's not really where it went. It went halfway so that I would have access to the yard.
Okay.
So... See, that's where my door is.
And that's the side of your house?
Yes.
He's gonna have to come back and talk into the microphone.
Yeah, she's really quiet.
Okay, so I only have the front door and the side door. Those are my only accesses. And I, I put the fence up for my dog and the rest of it outside of the, so the PVC vinyl is on, well, you can see that, and then on the side. And it was actually replacing a fence that was already there. There was a six-foot wooden fence that was really in bad shape, so that, that was really replacing that.
So there was an existing six-foot wooden fence when you bought the property?
Which was in very bad shape, yes.
When you bought the property?
Yes.
Okay, and as part of your installation, this is, I assume, a vinyl fence?
Yes, it is.
Part of that installation, they took down the old fence?
Correct.
Do we have any record, Laura, of any variance that was granted for the wooden fence?
We don't have a record of the variance. We do concede that there was a fence there before, but no record of it.
Okay. And the fence that you put up goes all the way around your property?
Oh, the vinyl is just the front bit there and the one side. I only have one neighbor.
Okay.
So on a corner.
Okay.
And so I have chain link the rest of the property, the four-foot chain link.
Okay, was, was that also new or was it already there?
Yes, that was new.
Okay, so everything other than this one section we're looking at, coming from the side of your house and down, down the one side is vinyl. Everything else is four-foot?
Yes.
And this is the only six-foot section?
Yes. And the house right next door to me is a much taller house. I live in a very tiny house. And her deck or their deck is, is above ground, you know, it's above ground, it probably comes to the top of the fence. And they have a German Shepherd that my dog is really afraid of. The dog has since died, but, so when they're out in their deck, they can just look. I, I have a deck along the back of the house, and so when they're up above like that, they can just look right down. And they always had that German Shepherd kind of looming over. My poor dog didn't even want to go out in the yard.
I'm sorry to hear about the death of your dog.
Oh, it's, yeah.
Well, any dog.
I know, I know. It was all of a sudden, right?
The, the fence that, that borders your neighbor, the vinyl fence?
Correct.
Do they have any fencing on their side of the property or that's the only fence?
If there's fencing, it's, it was put in 100 years ago.
Okay.
There might be a little bit, and I don't even know if it was theirs or with my house, I'm not sure. I, I'm pretty sure the fence installers took it all down after talking to our neighbors.
Who installed your fence?
Phoenix.
Did they have any discussion with you at all? Did you have to get a permit? Did they?
They got the permit.
And they had no discussion with you about where the fence was to go?
Or the height.
The, the positioning of the fence that you have right next to your door, that's where they installed it?
Yes. And there was a fence there prior.
Was that the old wooden fence that you, was that six feet?
Yes.
Any other questions by the board?
If I may?
Please, Mr. Green.
How'd we get here?
The permit was applied for last year with the fence being located at the back corner of the house. Six-foot back corner passed approval. Upon inspection of the finished fence, or lack of a call that the fence was done before renewing, I sent the inspectors out to look. They saw the fence was not installed at the back corner, but up front.
Thank you.
And that is, I can't come out my side door if the fence was in the corner.
Let me ask you, when, when the initial contact was made with Phoenix, did you say?
Yes.
Was there a, some kind of diagram or how, how did they know where to put the fence? Or did they just follow the old fence?
Well, they followed where the vinyl is, they followed the old fence. And then I just wanted, I said, I have $10,000 to spend, make me as big as you can.
So they went to the town and they got the permit and whatnot. So you had no input with them other than just you wanted to replace the wooden fence with the vinyl fence down that one side?
And the, and the chain link.
And the chain link fence the rest of the way. Any other questions by the board?
Dear manager, just so I have an understanding. So the, the fence encapsulates your entire backyard, correct? You have a fence installed along the perimeter of your entire backyard?
Well, it's a very funny shape.
Okay, so the diagram, that is all fenced in, correct?
Yeah, because the diagram is all fenced with the vinyl just being on the right side of the street and between my one neighbor.
All right, and it, and it's four feet, or it looks like it, portions of it are less than four feet, correct? Some of, I see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it should be all four.
Okay, so it's four feet along the entire perimeter with that, just that one section being six-foot. And you, I believe you indicated that previously there was a six-foot fence there. And other than that, just replacing a six-foot fence, was there any other reason the elected to have six feet put there or you, it wasn't your decision, they decided for you?
I think they couldn't get four-foot. I don't think, they never mentioned it to me. That was, you know, when they couldn't get any supplies and I think that six-foot was the only thing available.
So you don't, you didn't have necessarily any, because in terms of your dog, your dogs are gonna be fenced in throughout the entire rest of the property by virtue of the four-foot fence, so you wouldn't have had any objection had they installed a four-foot fence there, correct?
They did install a four-foot fence.
No, I'm saying the, the one part that you're here for the variance for, and you wouldn't have had an objection, there was no functional benefit from your perspective that you needed the six-foot fence.
Well, they have parties out on their deck, and if I'm outside, they're just looking right down at us and their German Shepherd was up there, you know, just barking and barking and barking. So there was privacy and plus along the fence.
Okay, well, with respect to the picture that's shown, just so I have an understanding here, where was the, I don't know, there was a photograph, I thought I saw, oh, yeah. So just to be clear, so you wanted the six-foot fence there?
Oh, I would have, yes.
You, so you elected to have it or that's the desired height that you're looking for there? Okay, and you're talking about the German Shepherd. Where is the German Shepherd located on that picture? Like where would the German Shepherd have been located?
See that house right there? There's a deck in the back and a pool, and it's a little bit higher, so they just, you know, they just looked out at me.
But they could do that, you only had a four-foot fence there, right? So the, the placement of the six-foot fence parallel or perpendicular to your house, how does that ameliorate them looking down into your property?
It's just more privacy for me. I have a deck along the side of my house and in the back. Plus, it's really weedy on the other side of the fence.
It's really wet, I'm sorry?
Weedy, very weedy.
Weedy. What kind of dog do you have?
Legato Romagnolo.
What kind of dog is that?
Italian truffle searcher.
Mr. Chairperson, I'd like to express my gratitude for tonight's cases, all pretty much involving some interesting purebred dogs.
So noted. Any other questions by the board?
Hi, I'm Richard Green. Did you talk to your neighbor about this?
Oh, she's, she was supposed to write a letter. I'm surprised she didn't.
That's all right. What about it?
She is very happy that it's a six-foot fence.
Yep, and does, does your neighbor, female neighbor, is, is there a male who lives at the other?
Yes.
Did you talk to him?
No, I didn't talk to him. I talked to her and she, she just, because they got the letter and she said they got the letter.
Did she express any objection to you when you discussed it with her face to face?
Oh, no, she was very happy that the six-foot fence was there.
Right, and we have no objection in writing from the neighbor? Okay. I just want to place on the record, I did a site visit and I was trying to find 888. And there was a gentleman at the back of a pickup truck and I said, hi, I'm Richard Green, I'm with the ZBA, I do site visits. I'm looking for 888. He goes, points to your house. He did blurt out to me some thoughts, and I, as diplomatically as possible, tried to cut him off and explained that the proper procedure was that he, if he wished, would have an opportunity to express his opinions in the proper form, and the proper form is not me at the end of his driveway looking for 888 Benedict Street. All right. Thanks.
All right, any other questions by the board? I have to ask if anybody in the audience would like to be heard. Since there's no one there, we'll take that as a no. I'm gonna open the floor to a motion.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I will vote to approve the application, and let me tell you how I get to that position. With respect to whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by other feasible means, the benefit, the benefit, you're looking for a fenced-in yard, you're looking for privacy, and it goes back to what I said earlier with respect to the other applications, that there's nothing inherently unique about the goals that you're trying to achieve, okay? So from my perspective, there are feasible alternatives to that. However, there are some unique factors from my perspective that mitigate in favor of the variance. The, the largest factor from my perspective is that there was an existing six-foot fence there. There's, I don't believe, Laura, you can grandfather in a six-foot fence. Once you remove the fence, no matter how long it's been standing there, you need a variance, okay? Even if it was there for a long, long time. However, I, I don't think the goal of forcing people to keep up on sightly fences should be something that we should put forward. I don't think that that's in the, that that would in fact have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. So improving your property with replacing one fence for a fence that was already in existence, I think, you know, you're not only not creating an undesirable change in the neighborhood, but you're actually improving the character of the neighborhood. So that's a, you know, a unique situation or a unique factor in your particular circumstance. With, with respect to whether the variance is substantial, we've already indicated that these types of applications are substantial from our perspective, and whether there will be any adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't know that they are present. With respect to the issue of a self-created hardship, we have, you know, indicated to applicants in the past that we, we view that factor, we kind of hone in on that factor in circumstances where the fence is already up, okay? Because we don't want applicants to come in here and kind of bootstrap us and say, well, the fence is already up, what are you gonna do about it? So, you know, from our perspective, that, that creates, you know, that's, the self-created hardship becomes more into focus in those types of applications. In your particular circumstance, I don't think those factors are applicable to you, okay? I think that you in good faith were relying upon the installers who installed the property. I don't think there was any lack of diligence on your behalf in putting the fence up. So when I'm weighing all these factors in my head, again, these are all close calls in your particular circumstance because of the unique factor that the fence was already in existence, a six-foot fence was already in existence, I, I would vote to approve the application, move to approve the application.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the rule.
Mr. Hope?
Yes.
Mr. Latif?
I'm gonna vote yes, and I'm just gonna add the reason why I'm voting yes. Also, the applicant's house has a door to the side and need access to that side, so I'll make sure to mention it.
Mr. Dolman?
I'm going to vote yes, and I'm gonna explain my reasons here. As other members have said, there's nothing particularly unique about wanting privacy in this case, and I do find that that benefit could be achieved by other means. I don't see that this is an undesirable change in the neighborhood. In fact, it's probably a renewal, a, a positive change in the neighborhood based on the unique circumstances of the fence already being there. This is a substantial request. I don't see any adverse environmental impact. I'd also like to emphasize that, that people are responsible for the actions of those they hire to do work on their property. And so that this is a self-created issue. However, on the balance, that's not determinative, and I would vote to approve the variance.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes, for the reasons stated.
Mr. Green?
We haven't replaced six-foot fence, arguably reasonable, clients, professionals. No objections from the neighborhood and for the other reasons stated.
Chairperson Farrari?
Yes, for all the reasons stated. Your variance is granted 6-0. Congratulations and...
Thank you so much.
You're all set.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other business before the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.